Eleven D, Mayor.
Eleven D, on page four sixty-seven of your packet. And this is an adoption of a resolution to continue conducting council, commission, and committee meetings remotely due to health and safety concerns for the public. Mr. Arbid, will you be presenting this? Or?
Sure, Mayor, I can just do a quick introduction. But basically, up until the end of September, public meetings were held in accordance with the executive order of the governor. And then that, that executive order expired at the end of September and legislation signed by the governor at the middle, middle to end of September took its place. And basically, that legislation more or less aligns with the governor's executive order. The main, in the main, you know, the main sort of difference for all of us is that with the, sort of the default Brown Act is when you're coming in remotely, you have to post your remote location, you have to let the public join you at your remote location. So this continues the waiver of that for virtual meetings. It does expire, I believe, in 2024. So it's not a, at least it has currently written, it's not a permanent change in the law. It might eventually turn into a permanent change, but at least at the moment, it's not. And in order for us to continue to use this emergency exemption for virtual meetings, we have to include, we have to basically reaffirm it every thirty days. And so assuming, assuming the council approves it tonight, then the plan would be basically every other, every other would have this on consent calendar until we get to the point where we start having in-person meetings again. That's pretty much it. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arbid. Do we currently have any questions from the council on this particular issue? I'm not seeing any hands raised. Okay. It's an action item, so I will open it up for public comment on here. Ms. Burgess, if you would kindly.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine if you're dialing it from your telephone. Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, thank you very much. Good evening, city council members. First of all, I'd like to thank all of you for your hard work, commitment to the City of Kattadi and collaboration. And in particular, to thank council members Susan Harvey and Laura Sparks for their work last month on putting together the very positive community meeting on diversity, inclusion, and equity, which I thought went really well and which I enjoyed. Thank you. I'm requesting that the city move ahead as soon as possible with an ordinance to prohibit the permitting or construction of new gas.
Ms. Blaker, I'm gonna go ahead and interrupt you on this for just a moment. We were discussing the adoption of a resolution conducting council and commission business via Zoom. And we had to do that under the governor's order before we start the meeting. So that was the topic that we were speaking right now. And we will open up the public comment just a little bit further in the meeting.
Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much, Ms. Burgess. And with that, I'll bring it back to the council, and I would entertain a motion on this.
Move to approve.
Second, that is Councilmember Ford.
Thank you. So we have a motion in a second. Ms. Burgess, would you give us a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much, and thank you for your consideration. Now we can move on to our approval of the minutes of our regular meeting of September twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-one.
Mayor Moore, I had a question about the minutes.
Councilmember Ford, go ahead.
So in a couple of the action and hearing items, there are phrases like council member recommends, and then there's a condition, but there's nothing indicating that those recommendations or suggestions were incorporated in the motion, which I think in all the listed cases, they were. And I, I think the phrasing is currently unclear. For instance, in, sorry, in ten B, the warehouse one, it says council member for recommends a condition. But then the, the text of the ordinance, there's nothing to indicate that the, that condition was incorporated in the motion. And I'm just wondering about a slight change. You know, council member Ford recommended, recommends and council adopts a condition that, or something like that. And the same thing is true in ten A, council members proposed the following amendments in the draft multifamily. But those were all incorporated by the council in the motion that was approved. But the minutes don't indicate that.
Mr. Parker, do you want to address that? Or are we assuming that our video, audio would, would cover those issues?
Well, the actual text of the ordinance would cover a situation where, you know, if the ordinance was enacted with the, with the changes suggested in the motion, that, that would, that would cover it. The minute should reflect what the motion actually reflected, though. It may be that Lauren and I have to go back and take a look at those specific motions to make sure that, that we capture it. I didn't have a chance to review the comments ahead of the, the meeting. So I, I can't, I can't on the fly make those changes. But like I said, I think the minute should reflect the, the form of the motion.
In this particular situation, we could bring those minutes back for an approval at the next meeting with the added language. Commissioner, yeah, Commissioner Ford, would that work for you? I mean, council member Ford.
Yeah, that's, that's fine. And I'm sorry I didn't catch this until just before the meeting, or I would have sent it in.
Okay. Councilmember Sparks?
I ended up laying out a typo in number nine direction on future action items. Councilmember Sparks. There's some extra letters in there.
Okay. So at this point, we'll go ahead and remove that from, from the minutes for right now. And we'll come back and bring it back to the next meeting for approval. Thank you. So now we will move on to announcements for those that have not been part of a council meeting previously. Meeting orientation for new attendees and viewers. In conformance with the Brown Act and the adopted city council rules, the meeting agenda includes items labeled as action items, where the city council will consider the item and citizens are afforded the opportunity to provide comments relevant to the item being discussed. The meeting agenda also includes a citizen's business item, which is, is the designated place on the agenda where citizens have the right to say whatever they wish. The city council may or may not choose to respond to comments as the government code allows. However, if the city council declines to respond, it should not be perceived as giving credence to or agreeing with any statements that the city council or its members believe are incorrect, misinformed, or purposefully biased. Measure S supports police services and a variety of recreation programs for all ages and the maintenance of our streets, parks, parks, and public buildings. See details on the web at kattadycity.org. Citizens interested in receiving City of Kattadi community alerts via text or email are encouraged to sign up at nixel.com or by texting your zip code nine four nine three one two eight 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 seven seven seven. Like always, we love to hear from you, so please feel free to contact the city at seven oh seven seven nine two forty-six hundred or info@kattadycity.org. If you have a non-emergency issue after normal business hours, you can contact us at seven oh seven seven nine two four six one one. And of course, if you have an emergency, please contact nine one one. Continue for updates on the city website and social media channels available on Facebook, Instagram, Nixel, and Nextdoor. The Kattadi Historical Society will host a community gathering reopening of the Historic Museum on Sunday, November seventh, 2021. Feel free to explore what's new between the hours of twelve noon and three P M. Museum is located inside City Hall near the west side entrance. Parking is available on East School Street. COVID- nineteen precautions will be in place. Now we will move on to proclamations. I have my printer close by here. This is proclamation of the city council, the City of Kattadi proclaiming October fourteenth, 2021 as Children's Environmental Health Day. Whereas, the aim of Children's Environmental Health Day is to raise awareness about the importance of clean air and water, safe food, and consumer products and healthy environments to children's health and development. And whereas, C E H Day was created by the Children's Environmental Health Network and celebrated for the first time on October thirteenth, 2016. And whereas, C E H Day is observed on the second Thursday in October as a means to celebrate progress of the children's environmental health movement and create a strong network of child health advocates. And whereas, C E H Day is a national effort supported by individuals, nonprofit organizations, and government agencies. And whereas, C E H Day encourages individuals and organizations to raise awareness and understanding of children's environmental health issues, seek improved protections for all children, and to perform acts of sustainability or environmental health wellness. And whereas, together, we can safeguard the health, safety, well-being of our most precious resource, children. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the city council of the City of Kattadi does hereby recognize Thursday, October fourteenth, 2021 as Children's Environmental Health Day. Be it further proclaimed that the City of Kattadi urges all citizens to observe this day with awareness raising and environmental health and stewardship activities to create a healthy, healthier environment for our children. Thank you for that. Now we will move on to approval of the final agenda.
Mayor Moore, I do have a representative here from Daily Acts who would like to receive the proclamation.
Thank you. Does that mean Mr. Anderson?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Thank you very much, esteemed council members Harvey, Sparks, and Ford, Mayor Moore, Vice Mayor Landman, and the rest of you Movers and Shakers in Kattadi for having me as a representative of Daily Acts, Eco-to-School High School Climate Leadership Program, and the North Bay Environmental Health Network. I'd like to also thank you on behalf of the community of Kattadi and the rest of Sonoma County. Certainly, I, I wanna go back to 2019 and thank you for banning synthetic pesticides in city parks. Someone that lived in Kattadi for three years with a little one, this makes a big difference, it made a huge difference for us. We happen to live across the street from a section eight housing apartments. And there was a gang of kids that we used to hang out with, my little one. And I remember when you guys adopted that, I was able to accurately relay that to the kids of all ages. And it was a big deal for me personally, but to be able to tell, tell the, that group that you guys had done that. So I want to just say thank you going back to 2019. And I also can tell you as someone that was riding my bike with my little one, everywhere, Draper, Filetti, La Plaza, Kattadi, Pocket Park, Putnam, of course, the Filetti Ranch. There are many places that made me feel safer as a father and as an environmental advocate for, for high school youth as well. So I also wanted to just say thank you for adopting this proclamation. I know it is just a proclamation, but this definitely shows the support for the right of all children of access to clean air, water, safer food and products, and healthy environments, and then helps to raise awareness for children's environmental health in general. Oftentimes, a commitment like this made at a local level and a state level can affect the children in our communities, of course. But then it drives progress and ultimately, we hope leads to, to policies at the federal level. I look forward to, to the day when we no longer need an environmental health month for our children, when we manage our urban, suburban, rural areas in ways that don't sacrifice anyone's health, first and foremost, our children. And so I hope you will hear out people like Jenny later today that are fighting for that very thing. But thank you very much for both your time today and also for pushing forward. And if you do have any friends on Santa Rosa City Council, please let them know they're the only ones that haven't done this in our county. So I just wanted to put that in there, too. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson. I think it was our pleasure, and as they say, the future is the children. Okay. Now, we'll move on to approval of the final agenda. Any other changes, Mr. Arbid?
Nothing, Mayor, no proposed changes.
Okay, thank you so much. Now we can open it up for citizens' business and public comment or consent calendar items. Ms. Burgess.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. And looking to our attendees tonight, Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Hello, thank you, and apologies for speaking too soon earlier on. I just got on and got confused, I'm sorry about that. So I'm requesting that the city move ahead as soon as possible with an ordinance to prohibit the permitting or construction of new gas station infrastructure and to place this on the Kattadi agenda as soon as possible. I know staff is very busy and has a lot of priorities to juggle, but I'm also wondering if you could give us an update on the status of this request. A number of Kattadi residents wrote to you back in April making this request, and we understood that staff would be working on an ordinance. As you know, the City of Kattadi passed an ordinance prohibiting the construction of new gas station infrastructure in February with no negative repercussions. Then on September the thirteenth, the Regional Climate Protection Authority unanimously approved a resolution urging all the cities and the county to stop accepting applications for new gas stations or expansion of existing ones. And they committed to working with each jurisdiction to enable them to pass their own ordinances. The climate emergency demands a response. The city passed a climate emergency resolution in November 2019. So the Coalition on Opposing New Gas Stations is urging you to take action now by stopping the permitting of any new gas station so as not to promote the dependency on fossil fuel infrastructure into the future. As well as the climate crisis, this is also an environmental justice issue as indigenous people and communities of color are disproportionately affected by poor air and water quality wherever there are oil pipelines, drilling, and pumping. Wherever there are gas stations, there are always leaks and spills impacting the water supply and the soil. As we know all too well, from time to time, there are often much bigger catastrophic events associated with fossil fuel leaks and spills on a larger scale, as well as things like the abandoned gas station in Kattadi. If you could give us an update and some reassurance that you will be agending, agendizing this soon, that would be much appreciated. We also hope that in, if there is a ban on new gas stations, then if there were any proposals to come forward for a new one or any application, you would be able to deny it immediately and save the staff time, money, and energy, and instead focus resources on things like working for a better public transportation system, pedestrian and bicycle infrastructure, and more electric vehicle charging. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Blaker. I can tell you that we are looking at a meeting coming up in the next couple of meetings to prioritize what we have on our plate right now and where those particular items will come up. So that'll be coming up in the next few meetings. So stay tuned. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Lori Ann Barber, go ahead.
Hello. I actually have to do something on my screen so that I can get to the place where what I want to say is visible to me. Okay, sorry about that. Jenny and I sort of coordinated, sort of not. Some of what I'm gonna say is a little bit of a repeat, but I will keep it brief. So my name is Lori Ann Barber, and I live at one oh one Ross Street, number twenty-four in Kattadi. And first of all, I would like to thank you, Mayor, and council members for your service. And thanks to the city staff also for your work. All of you make Kattadi a great place to live, and I appreciate that. I'm what you would call an environmentalist, and one of my biggest concerns is climate change. Kattadi is a small city, so how much we can reduce our emissions, which contribute to climate change, isn't huge. But it's nonetheless important that we do our part and also because that sends a message to other municipalities, counties, the state, when we take action or take a stance. So as Jenny said, some Kattadi citizens and a group called the Coalition Against Opposing New Gas Stations has requested the City of Kattadi pass the ordinance adopted by RCPA in September banning new gas stations. I do believe there is support for this among Kattadi citizens, and I hope the item can be agendized soon. And thank you, Mayor, for saying that you believe it will be. I realize it's probably not the most pressing thing facing the city right now, but climate change is a crisis, and the pace of government is really no match for the issue. We can't continue to move so slowly. The other issue I am keen to see the city take up is a reach code to prohibit fossil gas, also known as natural gas hookups in new construction. I have communicated with Damian about this, and so I know it's on his radar. I just want to say that since any appliance purchased today will be in use for ten, twenty, or thirty years or more even, it's critical that we electrify as much as possible, as quickly as possible, to avoid the worst impacts of climate change. Therefore, adopting a reach code as soon as possible is important. I just want to thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Barber.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you very much. Okay, so now we'll move on to the consent calendar. And Vice Mayor Landman. You are on mute.
I'm on mute, and perhaps I'm lost in the agenda here. I thought this was where we had an opportunity to bring new agenda items. Am I missing that?
Yeah, we're on consent right now.
Oh, I'm sorry. My apologies.
That's okay.
I guess you know where I'm going.
She's usually me that's lost.
I showed my hand, apologies. Thank you.
That's okay. Okay, so now we're readdressed that we are on consent right now. Do we have any discussion with the existing council on that? Okay, if not, I would be looking for a motion.
I would make a motion.
I would be happy to second after Councilmember Harvey's motion.
Make a motion that we approve the consent calendar.
So we have a motion and a second, I think. Ms. Burgess.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Now we will move on to direction of future agenda items. Vice Mayor Landman.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I think, without getting into a great amount of detail, one thing the council and the city has had frustration with in the past is the lack of control that a city has over setting speed limits in its neighborhoods. To make a long story short, we are limited to limiting speed to eighty-five percent of what drivers are currently driving. This obviously creeps up over time. If for some reason during economic downturns, traffic enforcement is low, it creeps up. We've discussed this quite a bit, this is old news. What is new news is there's a new assembly bill, number forty-three, by Assembly Member Friedman, Laura Friedman, that the governor signed. And basically, this allows the city to have greater control over changing, reducing speed, speed limits. I believe some of the abilities that are possible under this measure, AB forty-three, are lowering speed limits in other five miles per hour in high injury streets, streets with a high number of cyclists, business districts where there's a high number of pedestrians to protect areas where there are children. We do have a long area, many paths that lead to our school in Kattadi. And there may be other potential abilities. I have not gone through this in great detail yet, but it struck me that after the holidays, perhaps staff, when they have the opportunity to look at this, cross-reference this with some of the logged citizen traffic complaints that we've been taking online, through some really nice online interaction with the community, and come back with some proposed areas that the council might look to reduce speed to increase safety and comfort in the neighborhoods.
Vice Mayor Landman, I, I'm aware of the, I'm aware of the law. We're just trying to analyze what it means, and we've, yeah, provided it to the LRSP, the Local Road Safety Plan Consultant, to incorporate into that plan as well before we bring it back. But yes, we, we're looking at it, so.
Good, good, yeah. I think this would be a great thing to come back for us to be able to finally get a handle on some things that had got a little out of hand before many of us were here, probably, and put it back to a better place for many of the neighborhoods. So thank you, Mr. Arbid. Glad to see you as usual, you're right on top of it.
Thank you, Vice Mayor Landman. Councilmember Harvey.
I think that Damian already has his hands on this, but I just wanted to be sure. The groundwater sustainability plan is out, and they have given presentation to the Board of Supervisors. And I think that it would be beneficial for us to have that presentation.
Yes, Councilmember Harvey is scheduled for the twenty-eighth, next council meeting.
Perfect, thank you. I thought maybe you were on top of that.
Yes.
Thank you. So I don't see any other hands up for future agenda items at this time. So we will now move on to our regular agenda. And this is for an extension resolution granting a two hundred and forty-day extension of the previously approved commercial cannabis retail and distribution permit for Steve Monahan at eighty-one forty-five Gravemstein Highway in the commercial Gravemstein Highway zoning district. And this would be, Mr. Hosh?
Thank you, Mayor Moore, that's correct. I believe Ms. Burgess will bring up a PowerPoint presentation for me. And that will be brief. This is the second time the council has heard such an extension. Actually, I think the third time, but, uh, thank you, Lauren. Let's see if I can control it. I'll just have Ms. Burgess advance the slides for me if you can. All right, so yeah, as Mayor Moore identified, this is the project before the council's adoption of resolution approving a second two hundred and forty-day extension of the previously approved commercial cannabis retail distribution permit to allow Steve Monahan to operate retail cannabis facility at eighty-one forty-five Gravemstein Highway. And it's worth noting that this extension would grant that two hundred and forty days from today. The past extension was a two hundred and forty-day extension, and it went through December sixth. Mr. Monahan has provided some information indicating he does not believe he would be able to be open and occupying the business by that date. So he wanted to proactively request that the council provide some more time. And so that two hundred and forty days would go from today if the council chooses to approve it, or I'm sorry, tomorrow, which would be June eighth is the next date for expiration. And he has indicated that would provide more than enough time, but it also, at the staff recommendation, is building in a cushion, given the amount of unforeseen issues that we've all experienced over the last year and a half. I think providing a little bit of a cushion with this request is, is warranted. So with the next slide. Just briefly, the project site is on the northwest corner of Alder Avenue at one sixteen. And Ms. Burgess, if you advance that to just highlight the slide of the property, and then there's three buildings there. And if you advance the slide one more time, it'll highlight that it's the middle building that is proposed to be occupied by the retail cannabis dispensary. Next slide. Just some background, it's summarized in the staff report, but the council has, you know, in February of two thousand and eighteen, adopted the commercial cannabis ordinance shortly after Mr. Monahan was granted approval to operate retail business at this location. But it was proposed to be in a brand-new building built as a part of a complete redevelopment of the entire site. Shortly after that approval, the council granted this agreement that had all these very specific milestones included into it. This resolution incorporates some of those milestones to try to maintain the, the spirit of that agreement, but simplify it and make it more straightforward into a council resolution. On April thirteenth, as we mentioned, the council granted a previous two hundred and forty-day extension was set to expire on December sixth. And in doing that, they, they required certain milestones be met, one of which was planning commission approval of design review that did occur on June twenty-first. And building permits have been submitted, and the city is under review, or those are under review at the city. Previously, we were able to issue building permits to repair those existing buildings, but Mr. Monahan has, has completed all the improvements allowed under those permits. And now he cannot proceed with any more construction until we issue new building permits that will allow all the site work to be done. And he has been diligently pursuing those. If we go to the next slide, I'll touch on that a little bit more. And he has been diligently pursuing those. Uh, if we go to the next slide, I'll touch on that a little bit more. So, um, from the staff perspective, Mr. Monahan has been diligent in, in demonstrating a commitment to pursuing the permit implementation. He's identified some of his, uh, impacts to his ability to do so. The building permit, as I mentioned, has been issued and was even issued prior to the design review approval to allow the buildings to be repaired. Uh, just essentially repairing the existing facilities, not making any changes. The designer review approval allowed him to move forward with the proposed changes to the site. However, that needed to be reviewed under a building permit. Uh, and the requirements of that approval include off-site development, parking, restriping, dedications of frontage on one sixteen and Alder. Uh, so it's not just building permits, but also, um, off-site improvements. Uh, those are nearly finalized. I do anticipate those permits being issued, uh, within a couple of weeks. Uh, we're just waiting on a couple more details to be provided by Mr. Monahan and we should be able to issue those permits. Uh, it's worth noting that this resolution requires full compliance with all the requirements mandated through the designer review process and the previous council direction. Uh, the planning commission's resolution with all the, their conditions of approval is included on packet page three eighty-four. And it ensures that all the future right-of-way dedications and onsite development meet the standards uh, of the city and then all conditions of approval as mentioned. Go to the next slide. This is a very simple schematic. It doesn't provide the, the color details, but it just does show the sidewalk on the Alder Avenue frontage. Uh, the part, the parking space is being provided there. Uh, it does incorporate, uh, which, most of the landscape plan, although it's not color. Uh, but it's just wanted to, staff wanted to include this to show kind of what is being undertaken with this development. It's not just the buildings, but a full site development and one of the biggest issues is all the stormwater requirements, uh, capturing and treating all that stormwater. Um, has been a pretty significant, uh, undertaking for the site. It's just staff wanted to point that out. We'll go to the next slide. Uh, council is very familiar with this, uh, elevation. This is the, uh, building elevation. It doesn't incorporate all the site improvements, but it's nice to see kind of where this project is going. And if you go out there today, you'll see the buildings have been painted and the doors and windows have been installed. But it's the site improvements that are kind of, uh, waiting and then some of the other changes, uh, bu- building frustrations that need to be finalized. We'll go to the next slide. Uh, I, I thought this was worth noting if Lauren, if you'll advance the slide one more time. We talked about this. This location really is uh, one of the few kind of needle threading locations that allows retail cannabis. And so just wanted to provide that slide again. And with that, uh, all of those factors are going to the recommendation from the Community Development Department that the City Council adopt a resolution approving a second two hundred and forty day extension for the previously approved, uh, cannabis retail permit to Mr. Monahan. And again, that would expire on June eighth based on its current, um, resolution. And with that, I'm available for any questions. And Mr. Monahan is also here. And I believe he has a brief presentation he'd like to give to you as well.
Thank you, Mr. Housh. Uh, Mr. Monahan, you are on, in, in more ways than one.
Wonderful. Um, thank you very much, uh, for the opportunity to be in front of you today. Um, uh, Ms. Burgess, I believe if you could pull up, I have a, uh, presentation that I sent you earlier today. Wonderful, thank you. Um, so, uh, uh, the, the branding behind this dispensary will be, uh, Jane as, uh, noted here on this presentation. And, uh, I have my operating partner, Tony Shira, uh, available on this, uh, on this call or this meeting as well uh, for any operational questions that do arise. Uh, if you could please advance the slide, please. Um, so I am here today, uh, requesting a, uh, six-month extension was, was my request. Um, the way that, uh, Mr. Housh presented it, um, uh, is a little different than I understood it, but I think that will work. Um, so we have been very diligently pursuing this project. We have been uh, very involved with staff. Um, we've been working very hard to get everything through the plant check comment process and, uh, get this project completed. Unfortunately, we're at a juncture where trying to be open by December eighth is not feasible. Um, we received plant check comments for our second round of submittal on construction documents on September twenty-fourth. And we are working with our team to submit our hopefully final round of comments or, uh, submittals to the city, uh, early next week. Uh, so this, this six-month extension, our, our goal was to get to June of twenty twenty-two. Um, so we'll just call it the extension. Um, there's a number of things that are contributing to, uh, the difficulty in getting open by December eighth. First and foremost, uh, PG&E, uh, who we've been working with for quite some time, has, uh, told us that they won't even have the design for our power upgrade, uh, complete until mid-November of this year. Um, uh, and, and so, uh, after we have that design complete, uh, we still need time to install the substructures, have those inspected, uh, finalize the asphalt above that installation, install the conductor and energize the project. Um, and given PG&E's backlog of work right now, we're anticipating that to be in March of next year. Uh, another issue that we've had issue with is, um, contract, contractor availability and timeline. It's been very difficult to find a contractor that has availability in their schedule on this, on the timeline that we're trying to meet. Uh, we do have a contractor, uh, in line and we are ready to go to contract with them, uh, pending this, uh, extension request. Uh, but the construction in that space, they're forecasting to take approximately five months, uh, once we have our building permit in hand. Um, as I previously stated, we've been diligently engaged in the plan check process. Uh, but we do not have a building permit at this time, and so we are unable to proceed with any work on the site uh, until we have that building permit finalized. We've received our second round of plan check comments and we're expecting to resubmit that early next week. Uh, that will take city staff a couple of weeks to review on their end and we are hoping that we will have a building permit awarded in early November. Um, but given the, the timeline to get to do the interior improvements and the site work, um, we will not be able to be open by December eighth. Um, if you go to the next slide, please. This is a quick synopsis of the timeline that we have been working under thus far. Um, April thirteenth, we had our two hundred and forty day extension approved. On May third, uh, there was a final design review submittal number three that was submitted to the planning department for a design review approval process. On June fourth, we provided a revised traffic report per, uh, Mr. Housh's request. On June twenty-first, the planning commission awarded us design review approval for the project. On June twenty-third, two days later, we submitted our construction documents for the city. Uh, the city, uh, got back to us on July sixteenth. Um, and then we responded to that. A month later, on August, uh, eighteenth, we submitted our second submittal. On September eighth, uh, we received approval from Chief Parish, uh, on our security plan. Um, on September twentieth, we applied for our approachment permit for the off-site improvement work on, uh, Alder Avenue. Uh, on September twenty-fourth, uh, we received, uh, our second round of comments from city staff on the project. And, uh, there were a few additional items that needed to be addressed. Also, on September twenty-fourth, uh, we submitted our state license application to the Department of Cannabis Control, uh, which is a, a substantial, uh, amount of work that goes into getting that application put together. Um, and so that's now in with the state and we are awaiting, uh, further feedback from the state on next steps. And also on December twen- uh, excuse me, September twenty-fourth, uh, we have our contractor, um, lined up and ready to perform our interior improvements. Uh, so, uh, next slide, please. Um, our goal is to open this business as quickly as we possibly can. Uh, we believe that we can do it before this June twenty twenty-two date. Um, but, uh, this last year has come with a lot of, uh, twists and turns to it. The COVID paradigm has been, um, wonky to be, to be, uh, to be frank. And, um, it's just, we, we've just had a lot of headwind against us trying to get everything lined up. Um, we are, uh, asking for additional time to get to the place where we can get open. Uh, we have all of our funding in place. We have our contractor ready, our operator is ready. Our state license is in process. Our security plan has been improved and we have a tremendous amount of excitement to get this project completed. Uh, we need the certainty of this timeline extension, uh, to invest, uh, a substantial amount of, uh, funds and time into this next phase of construction. Um, and without this timeline extension, um, w- we're not in a position where we, we are, we will be able to be open by December eighth. Uh, we're very much looking forward to completing this project and becoming a productive member of the Katari business community. And, um, I appreciate all of your time today. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Monahan. Um, at this point, I'll bring it back to the council if we have any questions for Mr. Housh or Mr. Monahan. Councilmember Harvey.
I'll save my comments for later, but, um, your letter, you said that you have, um, a contractor that is available to start working on October first. Did that contractor start working or not?
Uh, that phase of work is not able to begin because we do not have our finalized building permit as approved from the building department.
So what is the chance yet again that if that takes now until November-ish, that that contractor will not accept other work and then not be available to be working on your project?
Uh, we have advised them of the situation with the timelines and they assure us that they are available to start construction once we have our building permit in hand.
Okay. Thank you for right now.
I'm not seeing any other hands, uh, from the council. So at this point, since it is an action item, I will open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon or dial star nine from your telephone. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, um, Mr. Monahan, I, I, I was a little bit taken back by your memo that you sent because, um, it, it just seemed like, uh, it was laid out as if you didn't know a lot of these things and they're all a surprise to you. We, um, have been working on this since two thousand and eighteen. Um, so it was a little bit, um, of a surprise to find out that all of a sudden you realize that there needs to be, um, power changed. I mean, there was not really much there to begin with, so it i- it seems like that should have been being worked on earlier. So, so that was a little bit disappointing. And it also said from PG&E that they're saying November, give or take any unforeseen things, given our wind situations we've had and the PSPSs and we're still not through the fire season. It sounds like we don't have assurances that this won't be six or twelve months from now if any type of emergency, uh, comes up. Is that your understanding of their letter?
Um, one of the major reasons their design is, is so far behind, I, I, I've been in contact with PG&E for, for quite some time on the project working on getting our power upgrade in place. And, um, all I can say is PG&E moves at PG&E's pace and there's absolutely nothing we can do about that. Um, I reached out to Vice Mayor Landman to get connected with Sonoma Clean Power and I spoke with the Director of Sonoma Clean Power and, uh, asked if he had any inside tracks on the availability of, of getting PG&E to move quicker. Um, I've explored using a third-party design group to try and facilitate that design. And they are not able to get anything done any quicker than we are in the queue with PG&E at this time. Um, you're absolutely right. All of the wind events, all of the power safety, uh, shut-offs um, has created a huge backlog in PG&E's design, uh, queue. And all of their designers, uh, are taking priority to fire-related events at this time. Unfortunately, this is the situation with PG&E across the board, um, uh, on other projects we've worked with, uh, working with PG&E. It's, it's been very, very, very slow to work with PG&E. And, um, I, I've, I've tried every avenue that I could think of to try and facilitate this and get this done quicker. And, um, I, I, I don't know how else to motivate PG&E.
There is no motivating PG&E.
I'm sorry, what was that?
I said there is no motivating.
Unfortunately, there's not.
Yeah, you, okay, and, and I-
Good working relationship with our project manager and I'm, I'm in contact with him regularly. He's trying to get more time or, uh, uh, a faster time from his supervisors. Um, but unfortunately, our, our, our hands are a bit tied at this, at this stage.
And you answered my question on the contractor availability. So is there anything tied to the PGD work that would hold up this contractor?
Uh, no, this contractor is for the build-out of the middle building of the, the tenant improvement space for the dispensary itself.
Okay, so you, you're, they're not gonna hold that up also.
No, ma'am.
Um, okay, um. I guess, w- lastly, one of the, one of the things that was in here is it, you, you stayed in your letter, well, it takes what it takes. And that really kind of set me off a little bit because it, it didn't seem that, um, this was going the way that, that it should. Um, since then, I've gone back, gone and taken a look at, at what's going on and it's, and I'm very pleased to see that, that a lot of stuff has gone, gone on. And, and I feel better that it looks like work is, is progressing. I'm still concerned that given, um, PG&E and given what other things the contractor might run into, that's a tight timeframe. If they don't start till sometime in November and you're saying, they're saying five months, that's still very, very tight. Um, I, I, I'm just not convinced that, that we're not gonna be here again. So, um, that's my only concern at this point, although I am pleased that, that, of what I've seen, we've made a lot of progress.
Um, we are, we are working as diligently as we possibly can to get all of our design consultants and, and everyone, um, re- returning information to the city as quickly as we can. Um, I think Mr. Housh can attest that we've been very involved in this process. We've been very communicative. Uh, we've been very engaged. Uh, I've had a, a, a huge number of meetings with city staff uh, to, to facilitate things and, and iron out any, any, uh, misunderstandings between, uh, you know, our, our group and, and city staff and uh, we are, we are endeavoring to be as diligent as we possibly can to motivate this project through the process.
Thank you for that. So my next question, I guess, is to Noah. So is two hundred and forty days really realistic giving, given uh, the situations that have been, um, outlined here? It still seems tight to me.
I, I do agree. It is a tight, it is a tight, uh, timeline. I actually had these concerns when we granted the first extension. Um, it's more typical for when we grant a, an approval for a cannabis permit, um, for extensions to that to be delegated to the city manager. That, that's the typical process because, um, I would say cannabis is unique in that a lot of times it's completely retrofitting existing buildings. Unforeseen circumstances come up, including some of the financing hiccups that can occur with cannabis. And so it's our typical process to delegate that to the city manager to allow him to evaluate the i- individual requests and then choose to either elevate it to the city council or, uh, grant the extension, which we have done and we regularly do for all the other cannabis approvals that the council have granted because of these things. I think Mr. Monahan's situation is unique in that it had, it was granted in the infancy of our cannabis process. Uh, he had that very, um, kind of unique agreement structure that the council originally utilized. So staff was trying to maintain some of the, the spirit of that and then more, get into a more traditional extension. But to answer your question, one way to prevent a lot of, um, additional administrative work to come back to the council would be to either grant additional flexibility in that timeline or delegate the, to the city manager the ability to give Mr. Monahan another month or two should something come up, uh, beyond his control. Uh, and I will say, we're, we're fairly, um, I don't wanna say skeptical, but we're fairly, we require a lot of documentation to justify extension requests. And we do, we have been expiring the ones who are from kind of non-responsive applicants because we, we don't wanna give those folks our permits. We want real folks who are interested in operating businesses in Katari to have those permits. And Mr. Monahan has absolutely demonstrated that interest.
All right, then that gives me food for thought on how I may wanna make this move.
Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Yeah, I have no objection to the ex-
Thanks. Yeah, I have no objection to the extension, given that at this point, Mr. Monahan has clearly invested enough in this project that he's not dragging his feet and, and you know, trying to change up what the project is. So I'm, I'm comfortable with the extension. I would also be comfortable with what Director House just proposed, which is that we insert that further extensions could be administrative and not require the council, although if, I don't think this is the case, but if we were worried that more incentive was needed for Mr. Monahan to get it done, then, then the incentive of not having to come back to us would be a significant one. But, but it's clearly there's, it's not in his interest to make this go slowly. So I don't, I don't think there's any, any foot dragging going on here at this stage and I'm, I'm, I would be happy to see the extension go through and would also be happy to modify it to make you further extensions at the discretion of the city manager. Thanks.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Landman.
I find myself in agreement. I think it's a good thing that the council pays close attention and I'm very comfortable having these brought back to the city council. In this particular case, however, I remember what we asked to see, what we were concerned about is we wanted to see diligence and progress on the part of the applicant. We were completely open to the type of things that come out of the blue sometimes, force majeure, delaying things, but we wanted to make sure the applicant was doing the work. And from what I can see from this and what staff shares with us, their impression is, and from what Councilmember Harvey sees, being on site and taking a look, I'm pretty confident that's actually happening. And if anything in this universe is force majeure at this point, it's certainly PG&E. That is a great behemoth that you just can't turn and it's going to do what it's going to do. So with that, I agree with Councilmember Ford. I certainly am supportive of this tonight. I'm also supportive in this one instance of adding, giving the city manager the flexibility to add a few months at the end of this. If we get a little tight at the end and get caught, I think that would be reasonable. That would not be a great change in circumstances that would need to come in front of us. It would just be, it's a tight deadline and it ran over a little. So those are my thoughts. If somebody or staff has a proposal for how we word that and how much time we wanted to add, I think that could be a great motion. But with that, I'd be happy to support this tonight.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey, back to you.
Uh, yeah, what, I would be really supportive of giving the man a city manager authority. It seems like Mr. Monahan is seeing the end of the line here. And you can kind of see it. So in case something does come up, I would hate for us to be here in May knowing that, you know, something was holding something up and have to go through this yet again. So I would be very open to granting that authority to the city manager. And I'm happy if you would like, when you're done, to make a motion stating that.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up from the other council. My thoughts on this are, we are out in the middle of the stream and we can't really go back. And so we should go forward and hopefully get this project completed. I did also happen to drive by and take a look at that and it looks like progress is being made, so that's encouraging. So with that, it is an action item, so I will open it up for public comment at this point.
Looking to our attendees tonight, if you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raise hand icon or if you're dialing in, dial star nine. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. We really want to address changing ordinance language right now. And propose language if we approve this.
I don't think we're going to change the ordinance, but we can give permission. And Mr. Booker can tell me otherwise. I, my motion would be, and he can tell me if I can't do this, to grant the 240-day extension and give the openness of the city manager giving an extension for up to three months if needed. Grant that authority to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm not aware of anything in the cannabis ordinance that would prevent the council from giving Damian that authorization. Noah or Damian, are you aware of anything?
You're correct. There is nothing that prevents that. It's typical that it be provided.
It sounds like, Councilmember Harvey, it would be something like in the first resolution, you know, where the 240-day extension is intended. Perhaps adding and delegates the city manager additional extensions up to 90 days.
Perfect.
Yeah.
That would be, that would be my motion. And thank you, Mr. Monahan, for listening to me.
Thank you for your time.
Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I would just like to, I'd be supportive of all of this. I'd just like to make sure that if, if there is any extension granted, that Mr. Obed would bring a report to the council to let us know what is going on and keep us involved in that.
Okay, so I have a motion on the floor. Do I have a second?
I'd be happy to second that, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. So we have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, if you take a roll call, please.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Landman.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. Mr. Monahan, good luck with that.
Thank you very much for your time.
Get that damn thing done, would you?
Yes, sir. Thank you very much for your time. I hope you all have a wonderful evening.
Okay. Now we will move on to item 11B, Safe Kahoots Implementation in Catati and Rona Park. And I believe Mr. Obed will be presenting on this.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So last time we all spoke about this, we had reviewed the report from Crisis Consulting. This is Adam Ben Climber as the, who gave that presentation. So look at some of the, some of the data, you know, as you recall, we had pulled the dispatch calls for service data, looked at it by agency, and this was Run a Park, Catati and SSU. And had a conversation about what, what that data was over 2019 and 2020 and what, you know, what types of calls for service the Kahoots-type team would respond to. And at that meeting, the council directed staff to continue to explore the safe, which is now called the Safe Team concept and move forward on negotiation of an MOU and what it is, which is in the packet, is a three-party MOU. It's between Run a Park, Catati and Petaluma People Services, who is the the service provider for what we're calling SAFE, specialized assistance for everyone. And as you recall, Petaluma, City of Petaluma has a very similar model that they piloted. And that's the name they gave their team. And so there was a conscious decision to utilize the same name just for public communications. So it's clear to people that we're talking about the same thing. Everyone doesn't have a different name for the same thing in different cities. So, so we're, you know, if we move forward tonight, we would be, you know, Run a Park or Catati, Run a Park, Safe Team. And attached to the, attached to the item tonight is the MOU, as I mentioned, and that is the final MOU. It doesn't include SSU at this time. SSU still has some, they've expressed an interest to join, but they're still working through some of the administrative details on their ends to be able to join. So I'd expect at some point in the probably in the not-too-distant future, we may be able to come back with an amended MOU that will include SSU as well. And the MOU is a, is a budget for the remainder of the year. And that is estimated at $717,000 for 24/7 operation. We would actually be ramping up, not initially 24/7, but, you know, partial days and then hopefully, once we've gotten all the, all the, we find out all the wrinkles in the program, we can start moving to 24/7. Another important element of the, of the MOU is the, is this cost, is the cost split, which is also in the MOU. So as it, as it's currently structured, it's based on the initial evaluation of the calls for service that each city would have received, looking at the data from 2019 and 2020. So that means that for the first two years, Catati has a 16% share and Run a Park has a 34% share. So and then moving forward from there, how it would work is it would be a two-year moving average. And then it's whatever it is, whatever the actual calls for service are, is what the cost split would be moving forward. The MOU itself is for a five-year term and in, in sort of in parallel with crafting the MOU, Run a Park has been taking the lead on acquiring a vehicle to use for the team. And they've managed to repurpose a van that they use for the senior center in Run a Park. And so that's being upfit. I think it's, if it's not ready now, it's going to be ready shortly. And and then lastly, we've been busy working on grants for the program. And so to date, I am kind of excited to, to say that we've, we went in with a joint grant application with the county of Sonoma, City of Santa Rosa, City of Petaluma, City of Run a Park for state DHS money. And this was actually COVID money that the state had and they were utilizing some of it for assisting mobile crisis team startups. And that is in the packet. It's on packet page 427. But basically, it's a, it's a four-year grant, starting this fiscal year. The total over the four years is a million dollars. The total for this year would be about $180,000. A lot of it's for implementation, just ba, just based on what the, how the grant's structured. So like hardware, implementation costs, that sort of thing. Sort of an important element of this is that the county is going to be working with all of the teams to work on the data collection element. What type of data is collected, how it's collected, how it's stored, how it's shared. As you can imagine, you know, especially when you're working with health data, there can be a lot of restrictions about, you know, how people can use it and how it's shared. And on the other side of, on the other side of this, with each van, we're, we're providing a mobile data computer. So it's the same type of computer that a police vehicle would have, except it's it's sort of set up a little differently, so it only shares the relevant information and doesn't, you know, get into the whole police stuff, obviously. The Department of Justice would probably not be too thrilled with that. But anyways, it's a, it's a, it's a way to communicate through a mobile platform. That's going to be, you know, set up and provided to the teams as well as radios to communicate, both with Run a Park and Catati. We are as, you know, even though Petaluma has set up their team, it's just a single city that they're operating in. So this is just the fact that we have two cities that, that this team would work in and sort of introduce new elements that we have to sort of think through and work through those, some of those questions. So the last thing, just going back to the funding, I did get word from the county that they're, that they're looking at recommending for year one. So these are year-to-year commitments. There's no ongoing commitment at this point, but a year-one commitment of Meshero funding of about $428,000, which is good news. It's much better than the first time, the first proposal that had been put forward. And this includes 178,000 startup costs and 250 in operational costs. That is the, oh, one more thing also on this, on just on the dollars. Even though we have some grants, they're just, they've just been announced to us, but they're not in place yet. So part of the action tonight would also be encumbering the full amount of our share. Like I said, hopefully, at the end of the year, we won't have used all of it. And I think it's more likely that we would use, we would have used that much of it, but we need to encumber the full amount. And lastly, as we get into, as we get into this program, I did, or we did talk about this last time, but Medicare is also a state program to fund to fund these mobile crisis teams nationally. And those guidelines are supposed to come out in April of next year. So the hope is, is that as we get into next year, there'll be some additional funding streams, perhaps from the federal government, that'll, that we can further add to the mix as we move into subsequent years. And the county, and the county has expressed to us, you know, after, after working with us on these pilots for the first couple of years, they have an, have expressed an interest in in expanding these programs, maybe, you know, subregionally or maybe, you know, countywide. But it's going to, you know, we're going to kind of play it one step at a time just to see how these pilots go and then, and then go from there. And in that vein, I will also say that going to 24/7 is going to ideally would require coordination with Petaluma. So there'll be continuing conversations, not only with SSU in terms of, you know, working through the remaining issues so they can fold it, they can fold into the program, but also starting conversations with Petaluma on how that, on how additional cooperation and sharing might work. We're already, just because we're, you know, we're using Petaluma People Services to run the program, we're already sharing some management resources, but you know, as we move to a 24/7 model, ultimately, there's going to be opportunities to share teams as well. But there's details to work through and there's also yeah, I mean, essentially, we just need to start talking to Petaluma about how that might work, you know? Because you have times of the day where there's going to be very little calls for service and there's no need probably to have several teams, you know, all spun up and operating at the same time at 3:00 AM in the morning when there's very little service need. So th, those are the, those are some of the things that we're going to be working on, assuming the council moves forward tonight. And then I will, I will also say, although I, I wasn't sure if they'd be able to make it tonight, but Elise Temple is is here tonight, who is the Director of the Petaluma People Services Center. So if he can, I'm sure, talk to it. And we also have Manning here, who is the Safe Team Lead in Petaluma, and I think would be leading our teams as well. And so we have both of them here tonight, fortunately. So even though they have no planned presentation, I'm sure they're happy to answer any questions that the council might have. And with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions myself, but that's it for the report.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. So we, Manning and Ms. Temple do not have any current presentations. So with that, I will open it up to the council if they have any questions. Mr. Manning, you did want to make a comment?
Yes, I'm pleased to announce that just about an hour and a half ago, the city of Run a Park approved their 84% of the funding for the Run a Park, Catati Joint Program. And they plan to take possession of their modified van from the customizer on Thursday. And we at PPSC are on track to begin training personnel on Monday, assuming that all goes smoothly.
Thank you so much. Ms. Temple, did you have anything you needed, wanted to add to that or no?
It's currently in attendees, so if you would need to be, maybe Lauren, if you could switch to the panelist, please?
What if I don't want her as a panelist?
Thank you for letting me join you and thank you for letting Manning speak. I just, I, I so, so just a little background, we did launch this program in July of 2021 in Petaluma. And with the help of Manning, who had been running the, up in the Kahoots program, and he has a lot of experience and a lot of skill set he has been able to bring, we've responded to over 600 calls on behalf of the City of Petaluma. city of Petaluma's Police Department. And we look forward to expanding this program and reaching out to the residents of Katati so that they feel that they have the access to the programming. One of the things that's different with our budget for the Runner Park-Katati versus the Petaluma is that Petaluma, Petaluma People Services Center serves as a hub for human services. In fact, we have seventy-two programs that we provide, mostly funded through county, state and federal funds that are strictly human services, behavioral health and those kinds of things. We also recognize that many of the residents of Katati come to Petaluma to access services through PPSC. By adding a navigator or a coordinator in the Runner Park-Katati model, we're, we're hoping to actually be able to draw more dollars from our funding sources to provide more direct services to the residents of Katati. So we're hoping to expand the ability and the touch of community service-based programming that is really health-focused with, with aging longer and providing the additional services that people need in, in your community to, to continue to live in a sustainable way.
Thank you, Ms. Hempel, for that information. I'll bring it back to council for any questions, Councilmember Harvey.
Ah, yes, thank you. I, I have a couple of questions. In the beginning of the scope of work, it talks about the Safe Team will operate within the geographic corporate boundaries of the cities while performing the services, except when shifts are pre-scheduled and approved in advance by the cities to serve additional jurisdictions. Could I get some examples of why we would leave our, our city without our safety? What, what are the examples of why we would do that?
I can address that.
Go, go ahead, Manny.
This is a part of a conversation that I had with Chief Parish and Chief Mattis a few weeks ago, looking at other communities in the county. Looking down the road several months, there is the opportunity, if Sabasipole or Windsor or Sonoma wants to stand up a similar team, that we might request utilizing personnel from the Runner Park-Katati Program as field trainers in those other cities. So we would then be utilizing those personnel on, on their payroll with the cities that they're contracted with. It would be recouping those costs from the cities they'd be contracted to. That was, that's sort of looking forward to training other communities in the county.
Okay, the, because the way it sounded like, it sounded like we were gonna blend our team out and then we would be without our team since we only have one and that, the way that was worded. So thank you for that.
There was an early conversation about sharing teams all the way from Runner Park-Katati down to Petaluma. That's a massive geological, geographic area, and we have a high enough call volume, including middle-of-night requests coming in Petaluma. But it looks like that may not be reasonable or responsible. It, it might make the most sense for Runner Park-Katati to have their own twenty-four-hour services continually. Because if they're the team that goes down to Petaluma to manage a call at two in the morning, and twenty minutes later a call comes in in Katati for a, a critical situation, then you're without a resource and we don't want that to happen. So that language may be residual from that as well. We've not actually talked about this team going from Runner Park-Katati down into other service areas on any sort of ongoing basis. And that, that may be language that needs to be massaged and maybe redundant.
Okay. And that leads me to my next question, and that's in the description of services. It says, "Calls will generally be responded to in the order they are received by the dispatch centers, except when a higher priority call is received. PPSC can be pulled from a call for service and dispatched to a higher priority call when necessary." Who makes that determination?
That decision is made by the police dispatchers in the same way that they would request an officer to clear from a low priority call and respond to a high priority call. So if, for example, we're doing a, a resource referral or a mediation or a counseling request, and that individual is stable but has some ongoing mental health support needs, but an acute crisis call comes in, such as officers responding to a suicidal subject, and the team needs to be pulled off the lower acuity call and reassigned, that is within that, the prerogative of the dispatchers on duty to make that decision.
Okay. And then in the persons needing non-medical care, it talks about transports to appropriate Kaiser Medical Facilities outside of the county of Sonoma, maybe permitted. And who makes that determination?
So in the history that we've been running in PPS, with PPSC down in Petaluma since July, we've had one instance where an individual had a prior hospitalization in San Francisco. And they had a, they provide a relationship down there. We received permission from the watch commander on duty in Petaluma to transport that individual down to that service provider so he could have continuity of care with that pre-established, excuse me, pre-established relationship.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And then I have one last question, and it's probably a Damian question. In the section about indemnification, it talks about, my question, is Runner Park part of REMA or are they in some other group?
We're in the same inherent pool, yeah.
You are? Okay. All right. Thank you. That's all my questions, right?
And Councilmember Harvey, one other thing I'll just, I'll just mention is that the, the question that you had about how you know, calls are handled in the order that they're received, except on a higher priority calls, you know, is received, that sort of trumps the other one that's already in process. And Manning provided a good explanation there, but I think part of the work that we're doing too is to, is to make sure that that we develop a, a call prioritization, you know, matrix so that both, you know, both dispatches have it and they know, you know, so everyone's on the same page with what's a, what's a higher, I, I think they more, you know, in the dispatch world, I think generally they have a pretty innate sense for what's a higher priority than another thing. But we still want to make sure, I think, that everyone's on the same page, that everyone knows what's higher priority than the next, so that there's no, there's less chance for misunderstandings, yeah.
Right. No, that makes sense. Thank you for that. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Ms. Hempel and Manning, I just want to thank you so much for bringing your expertise to help serve the people in our community. And I'm just so much looking forward to this beautiful partnership getting started. So thank you so much. I did have a couple of questions that constituents had brought to me that I wanted to find out while I've got you here. One was sort of related to Councilmember Harvey's questions about operating within city boundaries. What happens if there's a call for service just outside of the Katati city limits and the unincorporated areas? Would SAFE go and deal with that if it was within the Runner Park-Katati sphere of influence? That was my first question. And then my second question was, is there any way for a resident to contact SAFE or, or put in a call to SAFE directly, or does it all have to go through a nine-one-one dispatch?
So the first part of that, in terms of service area, using Petaluma as an example, we've had a handful of times, I believe, five or six situations, where the Petaluma Fire Department requested our team's assistance slightly outside of the PPD service area. And those requests for assistance were honored because they came from our fire department partner. The bigger long-term concern is about the Sheriff's Department poaching resources. So for that reason, we don't want the teams being sent outside of the city geographic regions. That way, the, the dispatchers for PD can maintain control of that decision-making. The, the other component of that is through the dispatch tree in Petaluma, there is an alternative for an individual to, to transfer directly to the management phone line and either receive the call directly or leave a voicemail for inquiries around scopes of services, services offered, et cetera, if they're not making an immediate request for service. So there is a, there is a contact for that. There is not a direct contact during a crisis for somebody if they are not interested in speaking to a police dispatcher. That is, that is the one weak link. We know that there are some people who have issues with behavioral issues or mental health issues who are not comfortable speaking to police dispatchers. We've done a pretty good job of, of maintaining good rapport with those clients and building trust and, and letting them understand that a request for service will be honored if there's no threat involved, if there's no reason that an officer has to be there.
Yeah. And by Councilmember Sparks, I'll just add to his first ques- his first response too is the dispatchers in the respective jurisdictions are the ones responsible for dispatching to the call, dispatching the SAFE team to the call. And generally, what Manning said, I think is, I, I think it's very true, be very similar here in Katati, Runner Park, where generally the answer is no, but sometimes if the situation, if it's requested from one of the cities, then, then yes. I mean, the same situation exists in SSU. They're not currently in the MOU, but if there's a crisis and it's, you know, it's, it's, it's better for everyone involved that we respond, then we will, I think, is generally how we would do that, but not as a routine course.
Yeah, it does seem to me like there could be some real benefit to Katati residents to have the areas ten feet outside of Katati, you know, also covered by this, by this program. So, so would, would the dispatcher be able, you're saying the dispatch could make that call and whether, whether to request the team to go out if it was, say, just outside the Katati city limits?
Dispatch generally has that kind of discretion within the parameters assigned by the chiefs of police. So we would have to ensure have the prerogative to make those decisions if it's considered appropriate.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, I would just point out that on the first page of the agreement, the second bullet down under scope of work, it actually, it actually says that they can serve outside the cities with permission from the city's dispatch patrol supervisor or watch commander. So it's already built into the agreement.
Councilmember Ford.
Thanks. Two things. One, one brief one, it's not a big concern, is the issue of working through two different dispatch centers and if there are issues of priority of call, those two dispatch centers have to, like if one's in Katati and one's in Runner Park, I can see, so I think what City Manager Obed said about establishing some kind of matrix, so we're all on the same page about what's higher priority is pretty important for the, so that we don't have that issue of Katati trying to call away from a Runner Park call and vice versa. My other question just came up, I think Manning, you said that you've handled something on the order of six hundred calls already. Petaluma is on the order of the same size of Runner Park and Katati put together, and that's way more than is in our projection for a annual call volume. And I'm wondering how the six hundred you've handled so far matches up with the projections that, that the consultants did before you started.
So based on a call volume of four thousand six hundred sixty-five calls for service that PPD received in fiscal year twenty twenty, they projected that we should be able to handle between twelve hundred and seventeen hundred of those calls on a per-year basis, depending on the specifics, you know, year to year. In the first quarter of operations, we handled six hundred seventy-three calls. So I think we are well on track for that. We just began twenty-four hour operations in Petaluma yesterday. So I expect our call volume on a monthly basis to continue to increase.
Right. Well, that sounds like a lot more calls to me than, than was projected, right?
Yes. And that is because when a program like this exists in a community, calls for service suddenly start to emerge that would not have come in previously. There are people who want access to resources and services who do not want to interact with officers or firefighters. And so you'll have people who've been waiting for access to services beginning to call and emerge from the woodwork.
Yeah, that makes a lot of sense, but you're not, you're not getting the volume of calls that you're feeling like you need more teams than you anticipated.
Not at this time. I can foresee if the call volume continues to grow, that it may be wise to add a second, a second team in service during the highest call volume period of the day. So if that were, for example, one PM to one AM, maybe we have a twenty-four hour team plus a second team on duty during that highest call volume time period. That would be a decision we made two, three, four years in, in the future, based on call volume growth and, and service need.
Okay. Thanks.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other questions from the council. The, the question that Councilmember Ford brought up was the same thing that I had on there. I thought, wow, that seems like quite a bit, but we'll see how the program goes. At this point, I will open it up for public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight, please use your raise hand icon, or if you're dialing in, you can dial star nine. Marjorie Crump Shears, go ahead.
Thank you. I just put a little piece of candy in my mouth. It's my dessert from my dinner. And I got called on, so if I sound a little fuzzy, blame it on the chocolate. As, as you all know, I am super excited about our cities joining in with Runner Park and Petaluma for SAFE. I was thinking initially in terms of cahoots, but SAFE is fine. Would you, number one, remind me of what the E, the letter E stands for in SAFE? That's my first question.
Everyone.
Everyone. That sounds good. My next question is, I heard money figures earlier, but I'm not sure I understood what Katati's portion of that cost would be. So if you have a chance to get back to that, that would be great, or someone can inform me privately. Again, I am so supportive and very excited that we're moving into this area. Thank you, thank you, thank you. That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Crump Shears.
Carol, go ahead.
I'm Carol Williams and I'm a resident of Katati and have been working in the organization called COR, C-O-A-R, Katati Residents Against Racism. And I think that the SAFE program is a wonderful step forward and I am really, really pleased that you've moved so fast on it and are cooperating with, with Runner Park and Petaluma. It's a, of kind, though these kinds of programs are taking off across the country, I read something recently in the newspaper that one, a large city in New Mexico has started a program like this, where they have serious problems with police handling all kinds of mental and drug use and all kinds of crisis items in a very cruel way. And so this, this program is going to be a lifesaver there and it's is going to be a lifesaver in Katati and Runner Park and Petaluma as well. So I want to let you know how much I support it. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol.
Jenny Blaker, go ahead.
Hello. Yes, I'd just like to add my thanks. I'm so impressed that the city of Katati is moving so quickly on this and I want to thank everyone who has been involved with their work to, to make this happen and move it forward. It was also very good to hear the detailed discussion just now and how much you're thinking ahead about all the details and possibilities and what ifs. So thank you and fantastic work. Thank you. Bye.
Thank you, Jenny.
Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
Thank you. With that, I will bring it back to the council. If there are any further comments or questions, Councilmember Ford.
I just want to say, I echo Jenny Blaker's comments. I'm, I'm thrilled we've been able to move this quickly. Kudos to City Manager Obed and the staff who have done all this work and put this together so quickly. And I'm thrilled that we're partnering with Petaluma People Services. He does fantastic work. Thanks.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, I wanted to hold my part of speaking tonight because I really didn't have any questions. Everything was pretty clear. And it was one of those delightful occurrences that are also rare in political life and government life and, and frankly, in real life, when you work towards something and it actually comes together pretty good, almost as good as you could have possibly hoped for. This, at least at this point, feels to me one of those rare situations. I had hoped early on that we could do something that would be a sub-regional-sized system. I hope we could partner with Runner Park. We were able to see Runner Park come into the mix and all these things are happening to some degree. This is an incredibly good thing. And I want to underline for Ms. Hempel and Manning, I think that regional, sub-regional statement again, this is the type of thing that fits and works in our community. This is the type of that fits and works in our community. This is the type of regional that really can make a difference and works well. And with that, I would encourage the sharing of staff, resources, providing mutual aid. And and as we get a larger system, which I'm very hopeful and rather confident, we will in the years to come with increased membership in neighboring areas and perhaps more teams, we can look to, how do we perhaps do cover up and moves and what might trigger them and how we can share resources in a way that still provides the coverage that individual cities expect. I, I think we can have that. And I think in the future as well, we'll clearly be able to demonstrate the additional wider range of services that PPS is providing, uh, and provide because of that, greater funding for them, which in turn allows us to provide more services to our wider community here in the sub-regional area for SAFE. So I'm very enthusiastic about this and I wanted to thank everybody who worked to it. And everybody who is working on it, I want to encourage them to continue, all three city staff, as well as the SAFE team and PPS, to keep looking at how can we make a bigger regional system together that works in this area. Cause I think, I think there's even more we can do there. I think we'll get more benefits from it. So just wanted to share that. We're obviously supportive of this tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate just what a wonderful thing this is. I'm so excited about it and I wanted to say a big thank you to um, city of Riner Park for really making this possible for us to join on, on with. And I'm just so, so pleased that we're all partnering and going, going at this together. So, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, I, I concur with a lot of the remarks that, uh, Vice Mayor Lemon made. I, I think that ultimately, I think we will be best served in, in a regional model um, when we get that far, but we have to take baby steps first. Awesome job on getting this, uh, MOU done, um, so quickly. And it sounds like, um, everybody's in agreement as to what we, we need to do here. And I think, uh, to answer, um, Councilmember Sparks question earlier about, you know, what do we do about, you know, little ten feet out, out of, of our area? I think that's ultimately where it plays from a regional perspective. If we can kind of all work together like we do on lots of other things, I think we're, we will, um, benefit. So thanks to everyone that has, um, done this and, and thanks to Petaluma People's Services for partnering with us. And, um, it sounds like, um, things are working well in Petaluma, which is great. And lastly, I just want to answer, um, the question Marjorie had, our proportion, um, as it's estimated right now is a hundred and thirty thousand eight hundred dollars. For right now. So with that, um, thank you.
Thank you all very much. I hate redundancy, so I'm not going to be redundant, but, uh, I would echo the same sentiments and really looking forward to the program. And appreciate, uh, Manning and Elise coming and all the work done by staff, et cetera. So, thank you all very much. And with that, I would be happy to bring it back to the council and entertain a motion.
I would be happy to make a motion. I do have a question though. Um, do we need to have a separate motion to encumber the funds? Damian?
I don't believe so. It's all in the same, where the week can.
Okay. I, I just didn't know if we needed anything special for that. So with that, I make a motion, we approve a resolution authorizing the city manager to enter into and execute a memorandum of understanding with the city of Ronan Park and Petaluma People's Services to operate and manage the Ronan Park Khatati SAFE team specialized assistance for everyone to provide crisis response services to our communities.
I would second.
We have a motion in a second. If you would do a roll call, please, Ms. Burgess.
Councilmember Harvey.
Yes.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford.
Absolutely.
Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes, thank you very much. And, um, best of luck and, and the program and, and continue to good work.
Thank you all very much. This portion of your evening.
You're welcome. Thank you. Now we'll move on to item eleven C, the micro enterprise home kitchen operation pilot program. I, I, this is also you, Mr. Obed, correct?
Yes, yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So if this feels like deja vu, because it is, you've seen this before.
It's, it's not redundant though, is it?
No, it's a, it's new, uh, new wrinkle on what we talked about last time. So, um, that was August tenth that we all spoke about this and, um, ultimately, we felt that, that the council felt that there was too many potential impacts to neighborhoods to endorse the, at least the state version of the MECO program. And, um, we'd sent a letter to the county board of, uh, well, the county, the board of supervisors, kind of at large, but, um, basically expressing those sentiments. Um, there were also, um, I will also say that we had a, um, you know, a lot like a packet ad that came out this afternoon. This is just background information. This was the, um, the county staff report for the September fourteenth Board of Supervisors meeting that they discussed this item, just to, I think it's potentially helpful, um, background. And at that meeting, um, so essentially what they discussed was they had received letters from Windsor, Rona Park, Khatati, Sebastopol and Sonoma. Um, that essentially all, I, I won't say opposed MECO, but opposed the state version of it, um, because they had many of the same concerns we did. Um, with sort of the impacts on neighborhoods and local, loss of local control, that kind of thing. Um, Santa Rosa, city of Santa Rosa also had similar concerns. Um, but they, um, they did propose to the county that they consider a two-year pilot program similar to what the county of San Mateo and County of Lake have done. And, um, uh, I will say that at the end of that is a, apparently a long discussion. At the end of that discussion, the board directed staff, uh, county staff to, uh, return to the cities and propose a two-year pilot program with a cap on the number of permits. And what their suggestion was, was um, a two-year pilot, which is consistent with what Lake County and San Mateo County did. They did two-year pilots. Um, how it differs is, um, the board of supervisors was suggesting that perhaps the cap could include, um, limits on number of permits in each supervisory, a supervisory district. So, um, they were proposing, our board of supervisors was proposing five per district, twenty-five countywide. Um, that's a little different than Lake. So Lake County had a similar proposal, except it was a two-year pilot with, um, two permits per supervisory's district in Lake County. Um, San Mateo County didn't really break it down that way. They just had a two-year pilot. Uh, Lake County also adopted an ordinance that sort of detailed, um, a lot of the requirements to be a micro enterprise home kitchen. And, you know, so some things, so some of the, some of the, um, concerns, at least specifically one that jumps out to me is the concern about grease in the sewer system. Um, it turns out that you can do some amount of regulation on water and sewer usage, even though you have to consider the use still a residential use in all other respects. Um, so they are, um, in the Lake County ordinance does make this point that you could, that they can put if warranted, some sort of grease interceptor on the sewer lines on residences. Um, no, that's not a, that's not a commercial like grease interceptor like you'd see for a restaurant. Um, but I'm sure it's, you know, some smaller version of that. The county currently doesn't have a, um, a timeframe that I'm aware of, at least to come back and have another conversation about this, but the county administrator has reached out, as I mentioned earlier, to all the cities to ask, well, what do you guys think about, about something like this, like a two-year pilot with five per supervisory district? So there's that, which is what the county put out. There's also, um, you know, another possible option, if, if this is of any interest, would be maybe, um, you know, a limit on the population size. You know, number per population size. I think what's in the staff report is one, another alternative would be maybe something like one per ten thousand population or something like that. Just so, you know, hypothetically, you could have all five. So say we're in, in this supervisory district, we could hypothetically, hypothetically have all five in Khatati. I mean, I think it's unlikely, but it's, it's theoretically possible. So if you put some sort of, um, population-based criteria on, on the numbers, then um, perhaps that would further address any concerns of, you know, all five ending up here. And then, um, uh, just, just something to keep in mind. I think, you know, whenever you start up a pilot program, um, there's a good chance that you get, say, in this case, with, with, under the county's proposal, you get twenty-five countywide operating. Um, it's, it's pretty hard to pull that back once you, once you start a pilot program. So I think you can expect if you start a pilot program, you're going to be, that'll be the baseline at least. Um, you know, maybe there's, there's issue, you know, maybe they don't decide not to increase the number of permits in future years, but um, it would be difficult probably to pull that pilot program back. Um, but the county could also in that two-year period, um, if there are issues, potentially develop, um, there, there might be ways to develop, um, different ordinances that address some of these issues. If there are issues that come up in a pilot period, without actually just ending it and shutting all the businesses down that have opened up under the pilot program. Um, and I think that's, that's, I think that pretty much summarizes where we are right now and, um, be happy to try to address any questions that the council might have on this item.
Thank you, Mr. Obed. I'll bring it back to the council if they have any questions. Councilmember Ford.
I'm unclear whether the county would have the option to do a two-year pilot program for takeout only, like takeout the dine-in portion of the, the MECO option. And it's not clear to me whether opting into the state program is an all or nothing thing.
Um, my understanding is that's an all or nothing. I don't think you could limit, um, dining onsite versus takeout only, I think.
Yeah, thanks.
Yeah.
Uh, Councilmember Harvey.
Uh, yes, Damian, you kind of alluded to this. If we, uh, started a limited pilot program, are you saying that if the pilot didn't turn out so well and we don't want to do this, that basically those folks would be grandfathered in and we couldn't turn off the program?
No, I know. So the, the county could turn the program off. Um, what I was alluding to is that just politically it could be difficult if you have businesses that are not operational and, um, yeah, you know, I, I mean, perhaps these businesses are already operating, but they're not operating, they're kind of operating under the radar. But once, you know, once you get them going, then, um, it's just, it could be difficult, right, to pull that back? Cause then you're potentially putting businesses out of business.
Okay. Yeah, and, um, you, they're in here, it's suggested that possibly one per ten thousand residents for our city, that would mean one and only one. It would be a little bit difficult from a pilot perspective to kind of compare and contrast with just one. Um, your thoughts on that?
Um, well, I mean, we, you know, we would have our own local experience with, if, if that were the decision to go that way and that's what the county did. Um, you know, we would have our experience with the one in our city, but, um, in the bigger sense, the county would be evaluating all twenty-five throughout the county to see sort of how they operate and if the pilot works or not.
So we would compare to others in other cities, not necessarily how it was, how ones were working within our community.
Right, right. It would be more of a countywide comparison, I think, more than just, you know, I mean, hopefully nobody ends up with like an awful business that's just is a pain, but, um, but I think it's going to be more of a countywide thing, countywide comparison.
Okay. And lastly, um, you talk about in the financial considerations that, uh, we would, uh, possibly need to enforce noise or nu- nuisance ordinances. Would we have to develop any kind of, um, specific fines related to these kinds of businesses? Or would it be just generic noise and nuisance?
Um, I don't know. I mean, I'm not a hundred percent sure, but I think it would be relying on the existing, um, nuisance regulations and fines, fine structure.
Okay. Yeah, cause I know we have specific things for like parties. I didn't know if this would need a specific uh, thing for it also.
At this point, I don't, I don't believe so, but I mean, I guess as we get it, if we get into this, then, um, maybe some need would become clear after some time. Not right now.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sparks.
Thank you. Um, to follow on with Councilmember Harvey's question, I, Damian, were, were we thinking about taking a look at our noise ordinance at some point in the in the upcoming future? So is it possible that we could look at it through that lens if, if we were to implement this pilot program to kind of keep that in mind as we look at that ordinance?
Um, yeah, certainly. We are, it is, it's on a list of items to bring back to council to have a conversation about, um, specifically to make the noise ordinance, um, hopefully more, uh, more functional, easier to, easier to administer than the current one.
Thank you. I've not seen any further questions, so I just want to open it up for a public comment.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight. Please use your raise hand icon if you'd like to speak at public comment. Mayor Moore, that will end a public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to the council. Um, any further discussion on this? Councilmember Sparks.
Oh, I believe Councilmember Ford may have had his hand up before we, oh, okay. Uh, well, I was supportive of this when it came to us before, so I'm still supportive of, um, of doing an even more limited pilot. I think it's a great opportunity for people who are, um, operating in shadows right now to come out and legitimize their businesses. And I think with five potential, uh, licenses for our entire supervisory district, I, I think it's unlikely we would have a major, a big impact from this. Um, so yes, I, based on what I've heard tonight, I'm pretty supportive of it.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Similarly, I, I think that's, this takes care of most of the, the big impacts we were worried about in terms of multiples nearby each other filling up in the neighborhood with parked cars and things like that. And they, and I appreciate the research that went into the, the packet about the grease trap issue and that we do actually have the ability to require um, uh, residential level grease trap. So, um, I, yeah, like Councilmember Sparks, I'm, I'm supportive of the, of the pilot program.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yeah. Just looking over this, I have a few thoughts. Forgive me, I'll try not to go too long, but I did want to get them all out. Uh, we listed our concerns and, and as did all of the responding cities, actually two-thirds of the county, um, including land use impacts in residential areas, including traffic, parking, noise from ventilation and mechanical stuff, not usually associated with residential uses, hours of operation, deliveries, fire safety, potentially even fire accessibility. Uh, loss of local zoning control. We do cede all control over this to the state if we go in this. It is all or nothing. Uh, enforcement issues such as noise, odors, parking, uh, polystyrene ban compliance. We're going to have a hard enough time managing that in regular restaurants, let alone in private residences. Uh, impacts on existing businesses and existing vacancies in our commercial districts, uh, especially during this time, from what is in essence, or would be, city and county subsidized competition. You know, we got fifty-eight counties in California. So far, only four of them have said yes to this. Two have said we'll do a trial in one city. So we've got six counties trying this in one city. That tells me that our concerns are valid ones. And I do agree that a couple of ones I was concerned about have been made slightly better by this, but by no means do I feel that most of them have been remedied. And I'm afraid they can't be, it appears. That's what concerns me. Uh, we were open to a locally crafted program. I still would be, I think. But it appears from what the board of supervisor staff says, and I believe legally they're right, that this is legally impossible. It's essentially all or nothing with this particular state program. I will say that the proposed trial, I'm not sure if it does a lot to rem, I know it doesn't remedy all of our concerns. And by reducing the numbers for that trial, it actually, I believe, makes it unsuitable for its stated purpose, which was to evaluate potential impacts. What I do think it would do though, is make it, as staff suggests, very difficult to roll back. What I do think it would do, though, is make it, as staff suggests, very difficult to roll back once it started without a lot of backlash. What it does, I think, is open the door to making this program permit without addressing the bulk of the concerns that most of the cities in this county who weighed in on this have. The one positive thing I do see and would support recommending is the staff recommendation from the board supervisor staff, number three, their action option of directing staff to advocate for legislative changes that will allow jurisdictions to opt in while also addressing some of the concerns of those jurisdictions. I think that would be a very good thing, and I'd be happy to support that. I'm not sure about this. A lot depends how the county would develop this, and we have no way of this is going. And once we give even a mild thumbs up to this, I think it, it turns on. So I'm still have discomfort with it. Like I said, I might have been open to this if it could have addressed our concerns, but from my perspective, really, the larger bulk just aren't dealt with, and they're serious ones. So that would be, I think, where I'm going tonight.
Thank you. On this particular issue, I would probably concur with Vice Mayor Lemon, and I think that the, the state should look at that again versus what the existing proposal was. I think there's a, an incentive for microenterprises, but I don't know that I think having a, a restaurant or dining facility in your home in a neighborhood accomplishes what really they're trying to do, and if it's to help disadvantaged or, or folks that may not have an economic, a wide economic platform to establish a business, I don't know that this answers that particular question in this format. Councilmember Sparks.
I think it's sort of related to something you just said about addressing the ability of people who are economically disadvantaged to start a business. I, I, my colleagues' comment about vacant commercial real estate didn't resonate with me very strongly, because I don't feel that some of the people who would be taking advantage of this MECO bill would ever be in a position right now to start a commercial business in a, in an expensive commercial real estate location. So this is really opening the door to people who would not be able to participate legitimately otherwise. And, and I think it, I think it is a really useful step towards equity to enable people to get their foot in the door.
Thank you. Councilmember Ford.
Yeah, I just want to respond to some of the Vice Mayor Lemon's concerns, and I, and, and, you know, we clearly have different perspectives on this, and that's fine. I I do not see this as an avenue for people who want to get in, get into the food prep business to get in. I see it as a way for people who are currently operating under the radar, not paying taxes, with no health department oversight. And you know it happens. You know, there's the, the neighborhood businesses, you know, where you can buy, you know, your week's worth of frozen food. So it, it's a way for them to come and daylight their businesses, which provides an, an opportunity for people who are currently operating in a rather vast, under-the-table economy to, to come into more above the table economy and, and work their way into, for instance, I mean, it seems to me more likely that people who start, currently one route that, that people take to, to make this jump into, say, a restaurant is, for instance, food trucks, or we have, I've been buying tacos from a, from a petaluma-based business at the farmer's market, and that's one current low, relatively low entry point way into the food, food business. It's still, you know, they have to have access to a commercial kitchen and, and in order to, to prep that, it's still a pretty, pretty capital-intensive thing to do. So I, I get the concern that if we had fifty of these things in town, that would be a, a big problem with our local businesses. I don't see one or two in town as a significant competition for our existing businesses. And it seems to me more likely that's a route into opening more local businesses, which I think we need more of. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilman Lemon, Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, I, I do hear this. I do think that even a small one number, once you open the door to this, you cede to that local control. It becomes problematic. We have little recourse to really deal with it. We are graciously left with the ability or the responsibility to deal with noise or odor compliance. But we can't shut that MECO down. Through that ordinance, the microenterprise kitchen is an allowed, once we give a thumbs up to this, even the smallest way, it becomes an allowed thing. There's no control. I do think there's a lot of good things in this direction. I was fully supportive of the previous legal version of the Cattati enterprise program. I think that was great. My colleague mentioned people cooking things and bringing things to farmers markets. That's exactly what that was for. I'm fully supportive of that. Unfortunately, the MECO ordinance does not allow that. It's only dine-in restaurants, takeout, or delivery, which is wildly inappropriate in a residential neighborhood. I, I, I'll just close my comments. I check this around with a few different people in the city, as, as we all, I'm sure we all do, you know, when we're thinking about these things, asking people we bump into, friends, neighbors, what are your thoughts? And I talked to one colleague who is in the area here, who has a background working in this city, and some knowledge in these areas, and he got the general decency of the concept, but he was similarly very troubled with some of the implications of it. His way of describing it was like, it's good to give a right to somebody, but if it take away rights that are existing from others to do it, then there's less comfort than that. And that's exactly what happens. People have an expectation, an existing expectation in residential neighborhoods, not to have, and I'll be flippant here, I'm kidding, but picture this. It shows a garlic fish kitchen open next to them, five days a week, cooking twelve meals, having twelve cars parked in front of it. That is not something they should have. Now, if they moved into an area that was designed to do that, or a busy downtown area, that's one thing. But most of our residential neighborhoods, this is why we have zoning specifically to not do that. And I continue to believe that's a good idea. I'll quote one of my favorite Vulcans, and it was something along the lines of the rights of the many, or the needs of the many outweigh the needs of the few. I recognize the benefit these needs could have for some few, but for the many that this potentially impacts, I continue to want to say no to this. So I appreciate the back and forth. I'd be happy to hear what my other colleagues who haven't spoken think, and we'll see where we go with this. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. I don't see any other hands up. Councilmember Ford.
If there are, if there are no other comments, I'd like to make the motion that the Cattati endorsed the county participating in a, or initiating a two-year MECO pilot under the five limitations of five per supervisor, supervisory district.
A second?
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Burgess, would you do a roll call, please?
Councilmember Harvey.
Yeah.
Councilmember Sparks.
Yes.
Councilmember Ford?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Lemon?
No.
Mayor Moore?
No. And I say that with a caveat that I, I don't disapprove of the program. I don't, the concept I think is good, but I think the, the parameters of the, of the program are not necessarily the best. Thank you with that. So we have a three-two. The motion does not pass.
Through the mayor, if I might, if it's appropriate?
Certainly.
Since they did ask for a response, I'd like to note that we send a letter again, reiterating our concerns and informing the county that the majority of the council voted to not to support this.
I, I would be supportive of that to let them know what our position was on that.
I think it would be appropriate. I'd like to think they watch our meetings because they're that darn interesting, but frankly, I'm not sure of it.
Do we have a consensus from the council? Just send a, a letter to that council member Harvey?
Yes, I, I'm okay with sending a letter. I, I just, I'm feeling like this is a great idea, but the implementation isn't quite there yet. There's a few things that bothered me. For one, Councilmember Ford, you know, brought up purchasing things at farmers markets. This is not, not, not allowed. And I would think that you would want folks that are starting out, that's a great avenue for them to do that. I understand that in order to do that, you have to cook out of a commercial kitchen, which, again, maybe something like that needs to change in this, because I, I think that that's, that's a good avenue. I just feel like this needs a little bit, it, it's like almost there, but, but it's just not quite there yet. So conceptually, I like the idea, and I, and I agree with Councilmember Sparks. It's a, it's, it's a good way for people to kind of get their foot in the door, but, but I, I'm feeling like this is not protecting others yet. So that's where I was at on this.
Councilmember Sparks.
I just had a quick question about the, the letter that we are proposing to send. Would it state that the result of the vote was three-two, or would it just state that this was our opinion, or how would it be worded?
Well, and that's kind of the question back to the council. I'm looking for consensus to say, hey, you know, that the majority of the council felt that it's a great concept, but it needed a little bit of tweaking because of some of these concerns. So they weren't completely opposed to it, but in that format, we were. And I know it's an all or nothing thing, but. Councilmember Ford.
Well, two issues. I, I would appreciate it if the letter did reflect that the, that the council was split on the issue of supporting a pilot or not. But obviously, that the majority did not support it. That's fine. Secondly, a couple of people have, have misinterpreted what I said about farmers markets. I just want to get that clear. I, I said nothing about farmers markets in connection with this program. I said that that's one example of a low-capital way that's currently possible to get into the food service industry. This would be another possible avenue for people to start food-based businesses without a huge capital outlay.
Okay, Councilmember, Vice Mayor Lemon.
Yeah, I liked your suggestion of just indicating that the majority wants this direction. If my colleagues would like it to have it say that it was a three-two vote, I'm fine with that, too. I think it's immaterial either way. But what I wanted to suggest was, and I can't take credit for this, but I was discussing this with somebody else in the region, another elected official in a neighboring community who has some background in this sort of thing. And this person was discussing some private partner and somewhat public enterprises where they share commercial kitchens space. It's nothing new under the sun, but it's kind of a great idea. It was described, everybody has a cook area, they have storage, they have refrigerators, it's essentially wired off, so your equipment, your resources, and whatever you have in the fridge will be there when you go to work. And you lease, rent, or able to share that space as need be at a very, very low cost of entry while still being fitting all zoning and, and safety laws. And it's the type of thing, if somebody was able to go out and demonstrate, I think, to our councils, I say councils because I'm thinking, you know, in the area, that there's enough interest in this area where there's people that want to do this, and they're ready, and they just need some help being able to jump into it. That's the type of thing that I couldn't see totally financing something like that as a city, but I could certainly see helping start it up, just like we help start up events, to see if it could bring, make something good happen in Cattati and perhaps in our subregional area. So just a thought, for those who feel strongly about this, there's a direction to go that I think we could all get behind. And we do have people in the area that have some expertise and experience in it. And if we can truly find, if there is a good section of folks out there that want this and need this, and are already in fact doing this, then perhaps we can get them together and see if something like that could happen. In the meantime, because it doesn't look like we'll get anything from the state that actually will fit the individual communities well enough. That's just an unfortunate problem. Anyway, I recognize this has been a difficult one. I think everybody's coming with the best intentions, whether you're trying to help people get a leg out or protect people's interests in their community and their homes. Those are both good things to look at. And it's always difficult when we get put in situations where we have both things to consider, and I certainly recognize that. So I just wanted to leave that out for a thought. And with that, thank you for the time, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Okay, so we have already dealt with item eleven D, so we'll move on to our city manager's report.
All right. Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. All right, so one thing I wasn't really gonna talk about tonight, but I'll just mention it anyway since you may notice it. We, we did install the closed captioning system, and it's still testing. It's not actually intended to be advertised to the general public at this point, but if you turn on closed captioning in the web stream, or if you look at it, turn on closed captioning on your home television, it will show the captions. But it's misspelling things like Cattati because we haven't trained it yet. But some people have sort of organically already noticed, noticed it since we turned it on a week ago, so I just wanted to let you know in case you hear it from anyone, that it is, it is turned on, and we're actually gonna be programming it over the next couple of weeks. So hopefully by the next meeting, all that will be sorted through. All right, so public safety update. It's just a reminder to everyone that we have the COVID testing site Tuesdays and Wednesdays, seven AM to seven PM, at the San Jose's parking lot. It continues to be there. So information is on our website as well as social media. Appointments are highly encouraged. It's better not to just show up, because you may not get a, a test, as I think one of us found out at least. Or it'll be difficult to get a test. So another, another thing that's coming up on Saturday, October twenty-third, is a new prescription drug takeback day. So we're gonna have it was a really successful day a couple of months ago. The, we hosted one, the police department actually hosted it by the community center here at two sixteen East School Street, behind City Hall. So Saturday, October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-one, it's ten AM to two PM. And actually, the first time we had it, it was so successful that they had to scramble and get additional containers. They had so much kind of shocking how many prescription drugs people have just in their medicine cabinets that are expired and just hanging around. So as far as the drought goes, so we're continuing to do well in terms of, you know, twenty percent water use reduction requirement. So it's a good job. This restriction, the restriction period will continue through December. At that time, the water use and storage will be evaluated to determine if either a further restrictions are necessary or for, or restrictions can start to be eased. So anyway, we're, we're on this trajectory at least now through December, and then that's an assessment point. As we talked about earlier this meeting, the groundwater sustainability plan, the draft plan for the Santa Rosa groundwater plan, which is the groundwater basin that Cattati is in, is out for public comment. We are gonna be at the council having a presentation from the GSA on the plan, and that's during the public comment period. So you all will get a chance to see that plan during the public comment period and provide any comments at that time, or shortly as well, if you'd like. The West Side Street project is continuing. You may have noticed that curb ramps are, have been broken out and are being reconstructed on in the Bird section off of Myrtle currently. And as I understand it, the schedule is in the bird section off of Myrtle currently. And as I understand it, the schedule is that they're going to start turning up the roadways and recycling them as soon as next Monday, weather permitting. So there's going to be a lot of activity very soon on that project. The Wayfinding Signage Program, so the Wayfinding Signage is this is for downtown and the, and the main entrance points to the Laguna de Santa Rosa Trail that is in construction and actually fabrication. It's going to be out in the field constructed November and then into December. So look for those coming soon. The, the signage is, we're still working on trying to find graphics. And so that's lagging. So all, all in most likelihood, the signs are going to go up without that informational sign that we talked about. Just because it's taking longer to get all that and then get it back out for public comment. So we're just going to probably miss the window on that and then have to install them later. Housing element, as you all heard tonight, that's starting. And so there's web, webpage set up on the webpage where people can start to sign up for updates. And again, that's on our, that's on our website as well as the bike master plan. There's a page set up for that as well with a good, a really good interactive map and also a place for people to sign up that are interested in getting updates or being involved in that process. In the world of recreation, we have a whole variety of youth soccer classes, the goal, the Kido, children's theater productions and many other things they can sign up through on the rec page. This past Saturday, the Katati Music Fest in Plaza Park was a huge success and the Chamber of Commerce is already planning the 2020 Music Fest. So that's going to be scheduled in June next year. And lastly, this Halloween on the, it's obviously October 31st, Sunday, October 31st. We are going to be again organizing and hosting Katati Candyland in downtown Katati as well as a lot of the surrounding areas. And so, so far, just to date, we have 20 local businesses partnering with us for this outdoor trick or treating event. And we're expecting many more to join, more come in every day. And this event runs from 11 AM to 3 PM. So it's really for the, for the little guys, a daytime event. And it's free for all. So look for more information as we get closer to that event. And obviously you can always come to our website, Facebook page or Instagram pages for information about all this stuff. So I'll just leave it with that, but I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Arbid. I am not seeing any other questions at this point. Now we can move on to city council member reports. Councilmember Sparks?
Thank you. I attended the Health Action Committee meeting on October 1st. There was a report given to us by human services from the county, just reminding us about the process for the ARPA funding distribution with a mission to ensure an equitable recovery and acknowledging the disparate impacts that the pandemic have had on different groups. I want to make everyone aware that the town hall for the ARPA funds for our district is tomorrow night at six o'clock for District Two. The timeline for those funds being distributed is there's this community-based organization survey going on this month. Requests for proposals will be in mid to late January. Proposals will be due in February to early March with funds released late in the spring. There was also an extensive discussion about this project that's been going on all year to investigate how to reimagine health action and how to reform it as potentially an independent entity that's governed differently. So right now they're in the process of evaluating different scenarios of how health action could be run. There were five different scenarios identified based on feedback, which were health action could be an equity advocacy hub. It could be a community innovation accelerator, a community health improvement hub, a collaborative local action network, or a resilient Sonoma consortium. And there were a lot of details about each of those five sort of visions for what health action could be in the future. So I think the timeline is that those, one of those scenarios will be selected in December and hopefully developing an implementation plan for how to transition to Health Action 2.0 sometime in January to March of 22.
Thank you. Councilmember Harvey?
Yes, just a couple of reports. Laura also attended the joint meeting of the Education Committee with Katati Verner Park. So I'm sure she just skipped over that.
I thought I'd save that one for you.
Oh, okay. Well, Laura and I were both there. It was a Dustin did a great presentation about Farmster and a lot of the folks had not heard of Farmster. So while Laura and I were a little bit more familiar with the presentation, the others in the group thought it was wonderful and they were very happy that, that we were doing that. So that was that. The second is the Santa Rosa Plain Groundwater Agency. The report's out. We're going to get a presentation. They're having a community meeting tomorrow night. It's a Zoom meeting. It's from 5:30 to 7:30. So that ought to be pretty interesting to get community feedback on that. And then the water supply is, you know, Damian said, you know, we're doing well, which we are doing well, but at this point, Lake Sonoma is at 44.1%. And Lake Sonoma is at 22.9%. And Lake Sonoma is down even now below the 15,000 mark, which is, you know, pretty, pretty critical, critical there. And also of note, they mentioned from a groundwater perspective, they've been looking at some of the, the wells and the shallow wells. They are already at the level in the fall that they would be at in 2002, which was pretty bad. And for the deep wells, we're kind of at a fall level already like we were in 2014 and 15. So it, the drought is also impacting our our wells, too. So that is all I have to report.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Lemon?
Yeah, I wanted to report out in our last Sonoma Clean Power Meeting, something I think I'd mentioned previously, but there seemed to be some interest in, came before us. And we did officially a vote to begin work on establishing a geothermal opportunity zone. Yet another acronym or buzzword to learn, but what this is talking about is trying to increase, invest, enlarge the use of geothermal power in more cost-effective ways. And we happen to have some of the best in the world geothermal here up in Lake, right in the confluence, really Mendocino Lake and Sonoma, right where they all border up in the mountains there. And what this leads to is some different ways of doing this. Currently, the success of the geysers depends on the very high thermal heat underneath the graph, relatively closer to the surface than normal, kind of an anomaly. Coupled with permeable rock that allows people to force water into that permeable rock and capture steam coming out of it. This is very effective and essentially about as non GHG emitting as you can get, but it tends to use a lot of water. And even using wastewater, that's a concern. Newer technologies will allow us to use running steam through a heat exchanger that removes the need now potentially once the iron, once the quote unquote kinks are ironed out, to not need to have permeable rock. This means a much wider range of that area could be used without needing to drill so deeply. This area also has the benefit of being right in an area of of transmission lines, large transmission lines. So it's a perfect place to supply power to our region all over the state, frankly, anywhere. So I, I won't go into more detail. There's a lot to this, as you can imagine. It's a large long-term project. It's going to need federal and state partnership. And the first thing it begins with is working to get all of our various counties together and behind this. But we're looking forward to this. We think there's a lot of potential in it. So as this progresses, I'll, I'll keep you informed and we'll cross our fingers, hopefully in the years to come to really increasing this really valuable resource for us all.
Thank you. I don't see anything from Councilmember Ford, so I assume you have nothing this week.
That's right. Nothing to report.
Thank you. And I did attend the ad hoc for the continuum of care board for the homeless issue that we're working on. That was last Thursday. And then what we're having a presentation this Thursday at 6:30 with the Mayor's and Councilmembers Association. So we'll be talking about that. And then the proposals to the county on the governing structure of that continuum, continuum of care. So that's coming up. And then the only other thing I had at this point, I did attend the music festival and opened that up. It was quite a nice little festival, very well attended. And then this week, and I, I don't know if it's surpassed some of the residents that are here in Katati, but it is a bulk pickup week with recology. So if you have anything bulky, you can put it out on the curb. If you need more information, you can look it up on their website. So that was that. So now we will go to public comment on non-action agenda items.
Thank you, Mayor Moore. Looking to our attendees tonight. If you'd like to make a public comment, please use your raised hand icon. Mayor Moore, that will end public comment.
You're muted.
Pardon me. So we don't have any supplemental information received after the agenda was posted?
Nothing further.
Thank you very much. With that, it is 8:28. I will adjourn the meeting and go Giants. Thanks very much. And we'll see you guys Thursday.
See you then.
Good night, everyone.